Call the meeting to order, please. Can I have a motion on the approval of the minutes of the June 26, 2018 meeting?
Move to accept. Second.
Okay, any comments or corrections on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hands. Opposed? Thank you. All right, so before I turn this over to the superintendent, so where we're sitting at is, at the last meeting, we voted to move all of the children in one school of the New Braintree OCAM situation into OCAM contingent upon the vote of the parents of those children in OCAM and New Braintree and school choice to attend also. So the superintendent will talk about those votes, but in the interim, we've had a letter sent to us, once again, she'll go through this, but we've had a letter sent to us from the New Braintree Select Board whom, I guess during discussions a month ago, we thought were on board with this, but apparently are not. And so based on that, we called this meeting. We also received some input from our attorneys regarding following the five-town contract. And so we figured we better call this meeting and discuss what we did the last meeting and how we would like to move forward. And that's kind of the chronology, so I will turn it over to Sheila.
So I have several pieces of information to provide to the committee tonight. I'll start with the survey results. In your packet, you have a summary of the survey results from the parents of New Braintree parents, OCAM parents, and school choice parents. At the top, you will see, again, a summary of the overall results. So in New Braintree, there were 47 surveys mailed, 27 have been received back, 19 parents were in favor of the move of all students to OCAM Center School, and eight parents were opposed. In OCAM, the results were much more positive, with 51 parents responding positively and two responding negatively, and with school choice, four parents responded positively and one responded negatively. Below that, you'll see the breakdown by grade level of the positive votes and the negative votes as points of information. And then any comments that were written and attached to the survey are transcribed at the bottom of the sheet. So overall, the parents were overwhelmingly supportive of the move. I don't know if you want to discuss each of these items, each of these points of information, or want me to give the general summary?
Why not the general summary?
Why don't I go through it?
Obviously, the vote is positive, so that was part of what we, the school committee, voted upon, the conditions subsequent, which were met. So I don't know if there needs to be much discussion on that.
Exactly.
So why don't you move forward from there?
In addition to that, as Chairman Willanen mentioned, we, our attorney, I contacted our attorney, as we discussed at the last meeting, as part of one of the steps that we would take. The attorney who worked with the school district on rewriting the regional agreement was Attorney Lennox. He is no longer practicing, and however, an attorney who works in the same law firm, who did assist with some of the work on the regional agreement, was available, and I spoke with him at length about the current situation, and sent him a copy of the regional agreement. He has reviewed it, and he is concerned about the language relative to, in Section 9. So you all have a copy of the regional agreement in your packet on page nine, I believe. Section nine is where the provisions for allowing students in the district to attend our schools and where it describes the intent to have elementary students attend schools in their own town. Below that are five exceptions to that provision. We've been discussing exception number four in paragraph four, which talks about reassigning one or more grade levels of students, but not all grade levels of students, due to certain conditions, fiscal, declining enrollment, fiscal conditions, or educational purposes. And we've been discussing doing that primarily for educational purposes, as well as, actually for all three reasons. The language that is concerning is the language in line three that says, that specifically states reassignment of one or more grade levels, but not all grade levels. With the vote that was taken, we would essentially be moving all grade levels out of New Braintree Grade School and into OCAM Center School. We were discussing having district students, high school students from our transition program attend school in the New Braintree Grade School while we continue to work with the Center for Hope in trying to come to some agreement of perhaps leasing some space in the New Braintree Grade School. However, in the opinion of our attorney, that does not, that is not in alignment with the language that's in this agreement around grade levels of students. His interpretation is that this language refers to elementary grade-level students. And therefore, all of the exceptions below this language are referencing grade-level So he believes that if we were to move all of the grade levels of students out of New Braintree Grade School, that we would need to follow the procedures outlined in paragraph five of this section, which describes the procedures for closing an elementary school in our district. In addition to that, we have received a letter from the attorney that represents the town council for New Braintree, and essentially stating that her opinion on the legal, the actions that we proposed, as well as the interpretation of the regional agreement, is congruent with the opinion that our attorney has. They, in that letter, she stated that there was an intent on the part of the New Braintree selectmen to take legal action if, in fact, we were to decide to move all of the students in New Braintree to OCAM. So I can provide further clarification on any of that, if there are questions.
Comments?
Yeah, I have some questions. Yeah, thank you for the clarity of that with the perspective of the language in question. The discussion that came this all about was dealing about what was the best way we could work with the district, as well as the assignment of grades in the most effective educational manner, correct?
Absolutely.
So last fall, we had the safety issue in OCAM, which then we moved the students to New Braintree. While we did that during, like, November, June?
Mm-hmm.
October, June?
Yes.
Okay. So then, in June, we talked about what was, what we could do, maybe not only with New Braintree, the K-1 model back to what we've been doing for the past, what?
Eight or nine years?
K-1 with OCAM and New Braintree. How many students do we have right now listed for K-1?
I believe it's sixty-
Between the two?
Sixty-three students. Sixty-three total students would be enrolled in grades K and 1, based on our current enrollment.
Of the joint K-1?
Of both OCAM and New Braintree.
Even though I know we had a long discussion last June, thank you for the survey. The survey is very overwhelmingly supportive, we know that. That helps us in our deliberation, as we said when we bring that in. But the language in our agreement, I think we have a problem with, with our potential vote that we did in June. We also thought it was a safety perspective. The number that I thought was used around 35 or 40 students was the number, the preliminary number for K-1, but it's a 63 if we open up August 30th, or first week in September?
I believe so. Tricia can probably confirm that. That's based on our student enrollment that we have in our student information system.
There are 43 students from OCAM and 15 students from New Braintree. That's, there are some school choice coming in, but I didn't count down the size of residents.
It's 58, so that must, so there must be five school choice?
What is the number for school choice, Tricia?
At the top of my head, I think there's two, Jess, maybe?
I think there were two.
One for sure and one for grade.
But I did speak with Mary today, and we went over all the numbers. I think there's a couple that might be moving out that are still in our rolls because we don't know that for sure. Okay, so your numbers are slightly lower than ours?
Yes.
But that's because of students who are unenrolling? Okay. But we don't have the paperwork for that yet.
And none of the transition program students are elementary students?
No.
And they are not New Braintree, they don't reside in New Braintree?
That I don't know. One resides in New Braintree.
One resides.
Well, at least one doesn't.
Okay.
But it's not a grade?
Well, they're not elementary-level students, so the, again, the legal opinion is that this language specifically speaks to elementary-level students. If you look at that opening paragraph under Section 9, the second sentence, it references all pupils will receive their elementary school education facilities that are located in the member towns, except for the following. So all of those statements that follow are exceptions to elementary-level students.
And on number four, thank you, Lee. When we looked at number four, and we thought, potentially on the safety piece, and we ended up coming with this perspective with the survey, we didn't follow the other piece of number four.
Exactly.
Of all grades. However, no grade level or grade levels of students residing in a member town shall be required to attend a school, except by attending school or schools in another member town or towns, except by a two-thirds vote of all members of the school committee in front of that, which will occur only after at least one joint public meeting of all boards of selectmen of the member towns, along with representative of the district, as well as at least one joint public hearing to be held by the committee on the issue of the proposed grade level reassignment. Did we do that?
No, we did not take those steps. So that's another concern. Again, noted both in the letter from the town council of New Braintree, as well as by our attorney, there are three specific steps. The two-thirds vote of the committee would have to occur after those joint meetings, which we have not yet held.
But the question is, at least according to what the attorney has told Sheila, is even if we did that, there's a question as to, well, maybe it's an ambiguity. Even if we did that, there's a question of, could we have the situation with no elementary students in New Braintree? I mean, I'm, you know, in reading this, and I've reread it 20 times today, in rereading it, it's, the clarity is not as good as it should be, maybe. That's what we're looking at. I think that, I'm not sure why that paragraph would be there about the two-thirds, et cetera, et cetera. I can understand it would be there when we did this whole thing seven or eight years ago to get some OCAM students and New Braintree students in one school and the others. So that makes sense for that. But this was not, to me, I guess, based on what the attorneys are saying, is this does not make sense if we're trying to move all the elementary students from New Braintree to OCAM for the year, and then bring in the three or four, I guess, I don't know how many there are, of the students that would reside there as proposed by Superintendent Marshall. So I guess to follow on maybe what Mark's saying, then Cheryl, so now from the money part, if we're looking at keeping kindergarten and first grade in New Braintree, I know there was discussion of some cafeteria issues, movement of special, of the specials, teachers coming in there, issues, so how does that impact us? I mean, I don't, we don't want specific-
We haven't gone through that exercise, so I can't say how much it would be effect, but we would have issues with cafeteria, we would have issues with custodial, we need to add custodial time back, we'd have added expenses of specialist teachers driving between buildings.
And secretarial.
And secretarial staff as well.
Okay.
And administrative supervision.
And school nurse.
And school nurse. And additional equipment for providing a STEM equipment for our new STEM program. We did not purchase that equipment for five elementary schools this year because we're only operating four elementary schools. So there's some equipment for our STEM program that would need to be purchased for New Braintree Grade School as well.
Why would you not have purchased it for K and 1, even if they were in OCAM?
We equipped one room in each-
Oh, I see.
-school that was housing, so it's like an art room, in a sense. And so because we weren't using, we equipped New Braintree, but now we will have to, you know, we will have to have, we'll have to add-
That's not geared for grade, I'm just asking as far as the STEM.
The kindergarten students, kindergarten and grade one students will have STEM this year, because we were able to add an additional STEM teacher. So it will be, there will be some equipment that will be necessary. Okay.
So, okay, Debbie.
Is there any more discussion with the Center of Hope?
We have not had further discussion with the Center of Hope, because we really wanted to, you know, for us to continue to have discussions with the Center of Hope, we have to have some reasonable assurance that we actually are going to have some space for them to lease and to be interested. And they, from, you know, the last discussions that we've had, and I know Tricia has had some further discussions since Dr. Marshall and I met with them, they're still very interested in continuing to work with the district to pursue opportunities for leasing space. But we have not had any official conversations with them, and, you know, I think we'll have to, we'll have to consider if they're, if we're not assured that there will be space available in New Braintree Grade School, that's the school that they expressed interest in, we will have to, you know, have to see whether they are, in fact, still interested in pursuing an opportunity.
How about the preschool program that is to be in New Braintree?
Why can't we move that there as opposed to Hardwick? I know you've contacted parents.
Well, we haven't made any decision about moving a preschool program at all. We've considered, as we discussed at the Special Education Subcommittee meeting, we've considered moving one preschool to Hardwick, because we have a needy population in Hardwick, and we think that there may be some opportunities to provide more support to students from the Hardwick community by having a preschool in Hardwick, but we haven't made any decisions about that. We have surveyed the parents of current preschool students, but beyond that, we haven't even analyzed the data yet, so. And that, I'm not sure that would do anything to solve this problem, it would put more students in New Braintree Grade School, but it's still, we still, the main thing that I think, you know, the educators that I've communicated with, and I feel, and I know Dr. Marshall expressed this on many occasions, is having a K to 6 school allows many more educational opportunities for our learners. They have the same types of experiences as all of the other elementary school students are in other district schools, that are not possible when one population is separated from the other. We certainly, you know, will provide an outstanding education to our K-1 students and our 2 to 6 students, as we always do, no matter what the configuration is. However, it's simply not possible for kindergarten students to interact with the older students in, you know, mentoring roles, in modeling roles, if they're not physically located in the same building. And it also limits our ability to house some district substantially separate special education programs in either New Braintree or OCAM Center School, if we have those populations split. So having those populations together not only saves us money financially, but allows increased educational opportunities for those students that we just simply can't provide when they're separate.
So the rec, just a second. All right, so the recollection from the last meeting was, and when Superintendent Marshall brought this forward, she explained that we all understood this, we were pushing the envelope on this vote, okay? Looking at the language, et cetera, she thought, you know, maybe this could fit in, especially if everybody was on agreement to say, educationally it's sound, let's move the kids to OCAM, and let's take this one year to try and really push and get something in New Braintree. So we're at the point now of, if everybody's on board and you push the envelope to say, okay, we think we can cover this, that's one thing. If everybody's not on board, which New Braintree Selectman apparently are not, you know, from my point of view, I prefer, even though I think there's enough to play in a language to at least make a defense of what we are going to do, or what we voted to do, I certainly don't prefer to spend our money in a court battle, you know, from a school district point of view. So having said that, and having said that, once again, we're pushing the edge of the envelope, I propose, here's my proposal. So I will entertain a motion and a second to withdraw the motion we made to move everybody to OCAM at the last school committee meeting. And of course, you can vote either way, I'm not proposing everybody vote one way or the other, but I think that needs to be addressed. And so if there's a, if there's a majority here that says, you know what, we think because it's educationally sound, we're willing to take that risk, that's fine. If everybody's saying, no, let's go back, you know, let's re-figure this because of possible legal action, that's fine too, that's up to the committee to do. After that vote, if in fact we withdraw that motion, or language essentially says that we withdraw that motion, then I suggest we revisit what I call the Dick Allen motion that he made, which is under five unfinished business of the minutes. At the bottom, it essentially is a motion made by him and seconded by Deb to keep K through 1 at New Braintree School.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
And so that would be a second vote, if in fact that is the case, okay?
Yeah.
Once that vote's taken, once again, depending on what happens, then I will, I've had discussions with people, and I want to entertain a vote or a motion that the superintendent be directed to speak with our attorneys, so that we don't fall into this issue, and to outline what the steps would be to close a school, an elementary school, and that would be discussed at the September school committee meeting. Okay, so based on what I said, discussion?
Move to withdraw the first motion, second.
This looks very gentle.
Okay, discussion?
No, I just want to say thank you for everybody in this table here, we've had discussions on this. We've been speaking and talking about the declining enrollment, a lack of unoccupied space for this sound educational practice of five years. We have, we have done a great job working with the Collins Center, we have worked with other, we've worked with towns, we've worked with boards, we've worked to the reality, and we have a regional agreement that has mechanisms in place that will allow us to make a recommendation and let it play out how it plays out. And at the same time, it does not tie our hands, that we can still investigate, research, and continue other avenues to do that. But the reality is, the footprint that we have in the educational landscape, as with our buildings, and the utilization of it, and the finances of it, and the money that it costs to run the schools, and to, even if we, which I'll support, absolutely, I would support the 43 to 15, the K-1 model. Seven, eight years ago, New Braintree came to us as well, because we had 70 kids in that building, with K through 6, with class sizes of six, seven kids, and people saying that was uneducationally sound. And then, under the old agreement, we were able to do the, we had to do the vote with OCAM and New Braintree only, the committee didn't have a full say. And then that said that we should try that. We have a model that works, we have models that work. So I just want to say that we have researched, and although we did script the issue a little bit, no matter how we feel about the vote, I think that it is in the best interest to withdraw, do the K-1 perspective, and then move forward on the next steps appropriately.
So we've talked about educational purposes?
Please, 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 you're not recognized, please. We all understand the educational aspect, that's, I mean, we're all there on that.
I'm not bringing up the educational aspect, I'm bringing up the emotional aspect for the kids from grades 2 to 6 that visit my classroom on a daily basis, because-
Ma'am, we, believe me, we, last, last meeting, we discussed a lot of this. I mean, we appreciate that whole, we're here kind of more looking at the legal aspect right now, that's what we need to address as a school committee.
Right, you have to understand our side of this as well. You have to, you have to listen to us and our explanation.
We, believe me, we understand your side.
She's not listening, though.
We have, we have, we have, we discussed this, excuse me, a month ago, or a little more than a month ago. We have, we have, we have the results of how the parents voted, both from OCAM and New Braintree.
And what was that result? How, you saying?
We just went-
All right. Yeah?
So we appreciate the position that the vast majority of parents have.
Yeah.
So-
So we're only concerned about the legal aspect?
Right now, we are concerned about the legal aspect.
Of course, I understand.
Okay, so we need to, we need to-
And that's what you're discussing.
Right, that's what we're discussing right now. That's what we're voting on.
And are we going to get an opportunity to, before you vote?
Not on this right now.
Is there our side of what we need?
Not on this vote right now?
No.
No, Dave.
No.
Maybe I can help out. I do not want to vote for this, but part of our duties as school committee members, our fiduciary duty, is to, basic stuff, is to make sure financially and legally.
Understood.
We're not in any jeopardy, so the first thing we have to do reluctantly, maybe, I don't know how anybody else here is going to vote, but I'm going to vote in this because we've been advised by our lawyer that this is, it's not appropriate for us to do. So we need to, we need to start there, and believe me, we need to chop this up a little bit, and Lee kind of, Mark outlined it, Lee outlined it, I think if you let us go through the process here a little bit, you may, you may not be happy with the outcome, but at least see how it has to play out.
Thank you. Any other?
I agree, I think it's regretful that we probably have to undo what we did, because what we did was in the best interest of the children, but we have a legal responsibility to protect our district and the board, and so.
And I think that, to follow on what you all are saying, I think that if we, if we do this, and I think that unfortunately, and I agree, I don't want to vote for this, it's a foregone conclusion, I think we are stuck with having 50 or 60 kids in New Braintree for years down the road, because we've been churning this, and churning this, and churning this, and we're getting nowhere. And I don't see the town of New Braintree doing anything to try and help us alleviate this either, and they're the ones who are making the, you know, the legal rattling of the cages.
Do you mean, I don't think-
Do we not the selectmen of New Braintree can bring legal action against the board without consent from the town? In fact, they have constituents they need to answer to, there's a bunch of them right here saying-
Once again, that, that, you know, that's their issue, you know? We don't want to get to a place where we're gonna have to go to the court to even discuss that part of it, okay? Roll call vote?
Probably.
Okay.
What's, what's the motion?
To withdraw-
We're, we're withdrawing the vote of the last meeting that would put all the children in Okam Center School, despite the fact that the parents overwhelmingly voted to do that.
What was the point of survey, then? Can I ask a question?
No.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes, Mr. Reese, right?
Yes. Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Daishamps?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Korea?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Wigler?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mr. Jean Francois?
Yes.
And Chairman Wolena?
Regrettably, yes. I will entertain a motion, it's actually the Dick Allen motion, I guess I called it.
So, that motion is that, keep grades kindergarten through one at New Braintree, and grades
two through six at Okam Center School for the 2018, 2019 school year.
Second.
And of course, with the extra, with the district vigorously and assiduously looking for other educational programs that could be placed into the New Braintree School. Discussion?
Uh, yeah, I have a question. We've kind of opened a can of worms with this whole thing, and, and now, could New Braintree come back and say, you want to all grades, or do you think they'll be satisfied if we vote?
Well, with what we've done, this is, we're, we're going back to essentially a status quo, to a degree, which had been vetted years and years ago.
Yeah.
No school committee members? Anybody out there wishes to make a comment now, please, yes?
People, one, could you explain the legal implications, maybe two things now, but I do know what the worry was as far as reverting your decision, I guess, right? And two, can we amend that school agreement, or the school agreement, so that education is for first, but in keeping the school open to forty children, and the remaining of the children suffering because the teachers have to travel back and forth, or, you know, with that stem class, you know, which would be important, because that would have two classes that would be different, why?
Right, so, so, so to the first question, I guess if, if our attorneys had come out and say, boy, you know, it's not really a, a good defensive position, but we think we can carry it, that would be one thing. With our attorneys coming out and saying, you know, we, we really don't think that is a position we can defend, putting all the children in Okam Center School, that, that puts us in a problematic situation from, from the legal aspect. You can look at varying approaches, or varying, you know, procedural stuff, et cetera, et cetera, but, you know, a lot of money gets wasted on that stuff. And, and from the school, school committee's point of view, and the district's point of view, you know, we have better places to put our money, and we don't have a lot of it anyway. The se- the second, the second one, for the second point of view is, yes, if we, if we, you know, we would have to go through a whole process again to get people from the five towns to sit, and we, we just did a, we just rewrote the contract five years ago?
Fourteen.
Okay, so four years ago, and that, that was about a year to eighteen month process, so, would be a process to go through that. Could it be done, yes. We could look into it, but it, it wouldn't be something that could be done overnight.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm just disappointed with New Braintree to agree, and then to come back and put us, you, in this situation to go back to the contract and find a loophole, and now our children are not for first. I guess that, that's my opinion.
Lee, can I make a comment?
We don't, we don't disagree with you, Peggy?
New Braintree never agreed. You know, that was said earlier, the select board never agreed, I went to them, they did not want their children to leave their town. So that was never-
We understand that sentiment.
Okay, wait, wait, please, wait, 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 just wait, to be recognized, are you, you done, Peggy?
I am, I just wanted to clarify.
Sure, okay, now, you had your hand raised? Yes?
Um, I, I'm a New Braintree resident, and I work at Russell's Lane, so I've been involved here on many levels, but, I, I have not attended a meeting in New Braintree where closing New Braintree grade school has been publicly discussed at a town meeting, it hasn't been brought to New Braintree. So, the way that I read, I've been spending a lot of time with the regional agreement today myself, and there are a lot of revisions under bullet point five here that say, these are the steps you take, but if you school committee feel as though that's what needs to happen, New Braintree could be for against, but they haven't been asked, like, none of these steps have been taken, so if you want to take the first step and make that vote, then let's do that, but let's actually put it on the table and have the discussion according to the agreement, how it's written.
Thank you. Yes?
Thank you, yes, very good.
With the students and the parents' emotions and education in consideration, we were talking at the last meeting before we even discussed merging the two over into Okam, about trying to come up with some way with such a small amount of people that would be in the New Braintree grade school, about putting milk in coolers, and driving the milk in coolers in a staff's car to the New Braintree Elementary School to serve them their hot lunch. That right there should be a clue to you that we have two little people in New Braintree, two little kids in New Braintree, and how many teachers would be there? Three?
Three teachers.
Three teachers, one admin.
No nurse.
No nurse, no principal full-time-
And custodian.
And a custodian, and a town with absolutely no police, which we discussed at some point over the year, how there is no police people at the, at the site when we're doing drop-off, and they don't even have a, a, a secure police station there. You're gonna put our kids, K, three grades, less than fifty children, with three teachers in a school, security reasons, you're gonna be putting milk in coolers, and putting them in the back of where some staff members' car, and driving them to our children? It's a no-brainer, that is ridiculous. There are many things that we can do for the New Braintree grade school, and I know that there needs time to understand that, and to investigate it, and whether it goes through or not, this is the year that we're talking about. Let's not put our kids through that nonsense, which is gonna cost us more money than not. Let's just put them all in one place, let's get, as best as we can, get around this for the kids, for the kids. And that's the important thing, nobody's giving all the kids-
Please, please, one person-
The teachers, and the parents, and everyone, they were so happy, and I wish they could stay at New Braintree, and I wish we could have enough people in New Braintree and Okam to have two separate schools, and I do feel bad for New Braintree. I've lived in New Braintree all of my life, I've grown up in a small classroom, I know what it is, but as everybody knows, the numbers are declining and they're not going up. So New Braintree has, what, maybe I'm wrong, from K through sixth grade, a total of fifty-plus children that go from New Braintree alone, they cannot maintain their own school right now, they just can't, maybe, hopefully, in the future, they can. We're not talking about closing a school, you guys have done everything that you have, that you can, to say that we're not closing the school, we're not putting it on the towns' people's backs. We're gonna maintain it as within our district, we're gonna have kids there, still within our district, until we figure out what we can do. In the meantime, this one year, hopefully it'll be longer than that, and we can figure out something, but this one year, rather than do these silly things and these bus routes that rush parents back and forth, and rush, you know, these staggering bus routes, and these principals going from one place to another, the nurses going from one place to another, it was a great idea ten years ago, but everything's declining then, we've gotten rid of the special education, there's not any kids, there's gonna be sixty-three who just had children, possibly, in that New Braintree grade school, and there's gonna be three teachers, security issues, what are those three teachers gonna do when they have to watch those sixty-three children, God forbid, in a security issue?
Thank you.
What are they going to do?
Thank you.
It, it, it is really very important for the parents of the community, and I understand that New Braintree is New Braintree, I've lived there all of my life, Peggy, and I, I do, I understand, I understand, we want our own school, everybody wants their own school, I understand that, but we just do not have the amount of kids to be in that school and to be our own, so we have to, we have to combine.
Thank you, thank you. Mark?
I think, you know, you, what you've said echoed a lot of the sentiment-
I'm sorry?
What you've said basically echoed a lot of the sentiment that the school committee actually has, and we discuss this really at length. The fact is, you know, New Braintree represents like, you know, six percent of the total population of, of district, and basically, we're now, we're now in this situation. If you folks want to remedy the situation, I would suggest that the parents of New Braintree address this with the selectmen in your town, because as you see, it's solely the selectmen, quite honestly, that are, that are concerned about this, perhaps some other folks in town, but I hear from the parents, and it looks like the numbers from the parents, twenty parents didn't even return the survey, so I don't know what their concern is, but the bottom line is, you know, that's what I would address, that's how I would address it, I'd bring in, have a discussion with my selectmen, and hopefully they would understand where we're coming from, because, you know, it impacts all the other towns, you know, from, from a tax standpoint, I mean, we're not using resources effectively with our education process.
Wayne Beck?
So, for this current year, coming year, you need selectmen's permission to move these kids over, not the parents and the school committee, because you guys both need to realize that?
We don't, we, no, we don't need their permission.
So why are we, why is he saying that we are depending on the school committee, go to school, go to, um, the selectmen of New Braintree to get them to buy into it?
So what we have to call the town?
But, why is this legal thing suddenly coming up? This school committee, why were you looking at this earlier instead of wasting money, color printing surveys to send to parents, getting all of us to take our time to come up here? That should have been your first step, was to go talk to legal about this, instead of asking us for our opinion. So why is this legal card all of a sudden getting pulled?
Can I just address that?
Please, 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 ma'am, please, just wait, yes.
So, can I just respond?
You were, you were recognized and spoke, there are other people.
There's a couple of things I would like to just respond to, the, the last comment that was made. One of the reasons I think that the survey was, was suggested to the school committee by the superintendent, was because at the meeting that the superintendent and I and Mrs. Worthington attended with this, that Mrs. Thompson just referenced, with the New Braintree Select Board, one of the comments that they made was that they would like to know how parents felt about this issue.
I think they wanted to know how towns, the whole town felt.
No.
No, we wanted, the selectmen have always said that it's a town decision-
Right, but I-
That is not just for parents, because it affects their whole town.
How?
Their voters, they, they're taxpayers, they have grandchildren, they have kids.
Wait, whoa, 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 whoa.
Can I just ask-
Stop, 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 stop. Superintendent, are you still?
So, that is one of the reasons that we gathered information from, from the, the parents. My impression of that meeting was, was a little bit different than Mrs. Thompson's, in that I felt as though the selectmen were open to, and I think Dr. Marshall, or she here, would agree, that we felt the selectmen were open to further discussion, they encouraged us to continue to talk with the Center for Hope around possibilities. This letter that we have, that our attorney has received from their legal counsel, certainly does contradict my impression of that meeting, that was several weeks ago, but they have specifically stated in here that they intend to take legal action against the district if we move forward with this decision. So, even though, and I'm gonna speak, you know, in, in my professional capacity here, I'm very disappointed that I have to make this recommendation to this committee, because I don't believe that this is the right thing for, for, for us to do for our students, and I think there are many people around this table who would agree with all of the comments that parents are making here, but we have a professional responsibility to, you know, think about the legal, protecting the district legally, and, and that's why we're-
So, has there been any conversation with legal about if something happens to these, one of these sixty-three kids, or the situation there?
So, let me, let me speak to that a little bit, I, I do think that it's important for everyone in this room to know that we believe the students in New Braintree grade school are safe, we would never put students in an unsafe situation. Our teachers are trained, our teachers are professionals, we have, they have the same training in all of our elementary schools, and we would never put students in an unsafe situation. So, we believe our students are safe in that school.
I'll take one more, yes, ma'am.
Um, my question is like, kind of off topic, if you guys, this is what, since 2014, this agreement, this legal, regional school district agreement, it's like, we've been in limbo for like a year, when we want school, our kids are going to, why haven't you like taken these steps in step five? Why didn't you have a public meeting with New Braintree if you needed to be making these recommendations? Like, I've been wondering where my daughter and son have been going to school for a year, and I've been wondering that, it's kind of your job to wonder that, so why aren't you following these steps? And we wouldn't be in this, like, it's not like, ooh, look at this legal agreement, it's like, this is fun here, why are you now finding out about it?
We aren't now finding out about it, as I said, when we discussed it last month, we were pushing the edge of the envelope, that was-
Why did you just discuss it last month? We've been wondering this since Okam closed last year, parent, and it's like, oh, they're moving back in January, are they moving back? We don't know if they're moving back, this name is school year, then the school year ends, we still have no idea, like, we see a picture online about this janitor moving furniture around, like, what school are they going to? I mean, that's, everyone in this room has that same opinion.
This hasn't been discussed.
Thank you.
Go ahead. There was a clause in the agreement about a safety perspective. What happened last fall was the safety perspective with the asbestos in Okam, which then involved the selectmen, the finance committees, and everything going forward on that, and then that's why the move occurred. That was not to move or close a school, that was a temporary situation. Matter of fact, that situation was alleviated like by March or April, where we could have brought the students back in April, but we didn't, because we knew the end of the year was coming, and it wasn't in the best interest of kids to move kids in the middle of the year. So the answer is, it was a safety issue from the asbestos in the building on that perspective. Now, going what we did in June, looking at all grades, and what we were doing in reconfiguring the Braintree, we were, as ourselves, and if you were here, we were debating it because we knew we didn't have solid ground, but we were willing to go a little bit out there on this. We know what is best for kids with your help and direction, we will and need to vote and move the process to close an elementary school. We, I wanted, me and others here, I wanted this three years ago, but we, but we decided-
But there was an argument, and this was just totally, we stuck for two years now.
No, 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 it's not stuck, it is, we are using informed information, we have the Collin Center, we have our data, we have the Quim, we make sure we involve people in this process. Closing a school is extremely emotional for any community, and you can see what's happened in Western Massachusetts, other communities. I've worked in Worcester for thirty-three years, and we've closed twelve schools over the years, those are very, very hard decisions, even with twenty-six thousand kids, but they're neighborhood schools. We had sixty elementary schools back in the sixties, so you see how important and valued schools are in the community. But the reality is, we can reconfigure this district, and maybe even have two elementary schools with this, but to do it, we have to a process. even have two elementary schools with this. But, to do it, we have to a process. But, I wanted to stress that, that we were not doing it willy-nilly. We did this from the safety perspective, from the Okamp perspective, which we had to do. And then, the best way was in New Braintree at the time. Now, we go back to the K-1 for one year, and we don't have the ability to, we could undo what we did just now recently and take a legal battle. But, that's not our perspective. We will keep the kids in the forefront. That's our job. But, we have a fiduciary responsibility. I have a new superintendent, started July first, and we're here on this huge issue. And if I have a superintendent, with all due respect, who is saying, "We're not on solid ground. We need to," my recommendation is, "I'm not happy about it." I'm going to support that perspective. And the eloquence of the parent about potentially what is in the best interest of New Braintree, that's going to go to the town. It's going to be spoken and clarified with four other towns as well. Because, we're all in the boat together as a Quabin Regional School District. It is not New Braintree versus Okamp versus Barry versus Ahall student or anything like that. They're Quabin students.
I agree with you. I'm just saying, why haven't you started right?
Well, because we, in essence, allow the process further to go on. And I accept your criticism. I appreciate it. No, I appreciate it. Because, in a way, we could have done this three years ago. We could have done these votes. And we haven't because we took the longer road. And now, here we are. And now, it's time to even go further on maybe starting the process to close an elementary school. Did you say which one? Maybe to stop closing elementary school.
All right, let's vote on the Dick Allen motion.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Whoops, hang on a second. Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Daishamps?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Korea?
Yes.
Mr. Wiggler?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mr. Jean-François?
Yes.
And Chairman Woolenan?
Yes. I'll entertain another motion.
Lee, I'd like to make a motion that the director's superintendent for our September meeting to consult with our attorney to help us in the steps to go forward for closing an elementary school for the following year, to start the process. We can always change the process as we...
Okay, just your motion first.
Okay, motion, talk afterwards. To direct the superintendent to work with our attorney, consult with our attorney, outlining the steps necessary in a sequential process, procedural steps for closing an elementary school for September 2019.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Okay. Do you wish to discuss that more now? Mark?
Nope, I'll leave it up to this.
Comments, discussion? Peggy?
I mean, if we're going to look at that, because we've been on the task force for also five years, and, you know, they felt that no one wanted to close a school. So, if we're going to look at closing one, we look at closing more than one. You know, I'm, I think that's the avenue we go. We've talked about, and Maureen had brought it up in the past, that we could close three and put all the kids in two. You know, so, I mean, I think rather than fingering out one school, we look at the whole picture.
Well, the motion is to ask our attorneys to lay out the steps.
Yeah, he said for a school, though.
For an elementary school.
An elementary, okay. So, I mean, when we discuss this in September, we can amend that. But, what we're looking at right now is so that we have the attorney's input in front, so that if we do something, we don't get something later saying, "Oh gee, you should have done it this way." I think that's what we're looking at.
On the timeline.
Right. Anybody else?
Mr. Marsh? Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Daishamps?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Korea?
Yes.
Mr. Wiggler?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
No.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mr. Jean-François?
Yes.
And Chairman Woolenan?
Yes. You had a request for executive session?
I had a request for executive session for a potential discussion for cafeteria. We don't need for it to go into executive session. We, I can bring the information in September in our packet. We have a...
No, you can't. We're meeting in September. We want the position August 27.
Okay, I apologize. Can I do it publicly?
Public session? Sure.
Okay, you go public session, okay. So, no, we don't need to go further into executive session. We can do it publicly in our packet. I can ask Cheryl to quickly outline as she might, why we are proposing a position in cafeteria position for a team leader at one of our building for the high school.
We have an opportunity because there is an opening at the high school to reevaluate the staffing pattern that we have there. Earlier in the year, we had a cook supervisor at Ruggles Lane that left the district, and we have appointed a worker from the middle high school to be that cook supervisor at Ruggles Lane. So, we took a look at what we have, and our high school is the only school's staffing pattern that is too small for the number of meals they serve. And so, the director and I, she couldn't be here tonight. She had a death in her family. She's on her way to New Hampshire as we speak. We looked at the position, and rather than add or fill the open position as a general worker, we'd like to institute the, a nutrition team leader. This person would assist the cook supervisor at that location in assisting and supervising the workers that are on the line. We came up with a salary, and that's what we had to negotiate with the food service workers. We came up with a salary that is slightly higher than the top step of the general workers that work at the location, but less than a supervisor who works at one of, a cook supervisor that works at the elementary schools. So, we came up with a salary of eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
So...
There's a difference between, Cheryl outlined, there's a difference between the cafeteria worker and a supervisor. In between that, the person is more of a team leader, non-supervisor responsibilities. And it's a pilot point for one year to evaluate it, because we'll be going into negotiations with the cafeteria for monies in the end of this year. So, it made sense. We met with the, instead of putting in executive session, we met with cafeteria leadership yesterday, and they had no problem with it. They supported the chart description and the salary, and wanted the same perspective to look at it in a year, make the adjustments, and go forward on that.
Okay, so...
Congratulations, recommendation to hire this person.
To post, we need to...
To post the position. Correct, okay. So, this can be a roll call vote, or, I mean...
I think it can be. I'll double check.
Did you already vote?
Yes. Who seconded the motion?
I did.
Dave, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Okay. All in favor to move forward to post this position, please raise your hands. opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. I'll entertain another motion.
Is there any?
No.
You have a motion to adjourn?
Thank you. Roger.